Okay, next, communications. The only communication I have, and I would suggest if members are available on August 12th, that the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network is having that key leader summit. I'm not sure where it is. Usually it's in the old seventh day of the institute.
Yeah, the Alliance Church, right off Fall City.
And it's a good time to mingle and talk with other community organizations. The police are often there, social workers are often there, principals, counselors, a lot of people that are really concerned about youth, mostly. And usually there's a speaker and then breakout sessions.
This is August 12th?
This is August 12th.
Yeah, this is when they're gonna reveal their, their community needs assessment.
Yes, that is true.
Starts at eight thirty in the morning for breakfast.
Yes. Until eight thirty. Well, everybody knows, that makes me feel that, "Who do you want for breakfast? I'm bringing it." That's the truth, I supply breakfast.
Oh, steak and eggs.
Dr. Wickup, you're next on the communication.
Sorry, I'm thinking about breakfast. All right, well, again, several bullet points to update you on. So July was a very strong month for us. We were quite busy. Our average daily census was twenty-four point four in a twenty-five bed facility. So, strong, strong work, and that was truly a combination of swing patients and acute patients. So we had quite a few acute patients in there as well. In the month of July, we also had not only the highest, we had the highest ED volume of the year, so it exceeded the next highest month, like twenty-two. So, really, really busy month in the emergency department. We, I received, we received three thank you notes over the course of this last month. One of them is from Red, White &amp; Boom, so that's the Snoqualmie Fourth of July celebrations. So we provide first aid services there. We got one, a thank you note from the Snoqualmie Valley Senior Center, who contributed to their fundraiser this year, and so a nice thank you note. And then also thank you note from the Washington Poison Center. The Washington Poison Center operates as a nonprofit, and so we did make a donation to them because we use them a lot. They're a great resource of toxicologists, that any time we have somebody come into the emergency department that has had an ingestion, that we wanna really not just have to go and look at literature, but talk to somebody who actually is expert in the field and they need consults available and that completely funded through donations of appreciation from them there. Tonight, later on in the agenda, we'll do a review of the different C-suite roles through a variety of channels. I've heard questions coming up and uncertain about what the different roles are, it's a great opportunity to introduce the new org chart as well. So we'll get to that later on in the agenda. We continue to focus on community engagement and is just looking for opportunities to be out and making that increase, increase contacts in the, in the community. The medical committee report will include some of those. I just wanted to highlight the ISCL Sports Combine that we participated in. We were at the Pineapple Life Festival. We had our dieticians there, and they were incredibly popular because they were one of the food site few tents on display that had food. And they had, they had healthy pumpkin brownies, and they had Chia Sea Raspberry Jelly. So we handed out the recipes, as well as on the back of the recipes was all the services that are offered by the hospital. Again, you can envision Costco, already concrete's around the food carts, and that's, they're tent, very popular. Oh, and they had infused water, so that was another popular, fruit infused water. And then, where am I? The Snow Valley Chamber Golf Event. We also, we sponsored a hole, which means that we had one of our staff members standing at the hole, having conversations with everybody as they came through, doing some entertainment as well. But again, very well received.
Who was that by chance?
Heidi, that our med search manager.
Oh, really?
Yeah. A lot of fun. One of the, you know, you had games for them to play, and this is all fun. She also had an award that if on your first putt, if you're on your first putt, you made it into the hole. She had a certificate that you got a free colonoscopy and a viewing party for four. Some of us people were more interested in having your picture taken with the certificate. There was a real.
Can you combine that with a colonoscopy?
Yes, absolutely, that's what it was for. So everybody had a lot of fun with that and on. We continue to just very methodically spend time, the attendance, looking for opportunities to not only increase revenue, but also decrease expenses. And so, again, in the methodical approach, we've got the reference lab that launched to the outline clinics, it's already exceeding expectations, we're just a month into that. And then other focus areas around expenses are looking at supplies, looking at food service, we get transportation costs in our sent out labs. And again, we will move on, you know, once we work our way through these, we'll move on to the next set of things to look at. Not finding a lot, but again, we wanna be intentional and methodical there. We participate in several value-based contracts, and we do that through EHN, through Eastside Health Network. And so one of the value-based contracts that we participate in is with Cigna. And so there was a recent incentive payout, and so it very, EHN was very thrilled, this is the first payout in two years, you know, and so at only the two-year mark, many clinically-integrated networks are in their third, fourth, or fifth year before they receive any benefits. And at the second year, EHN is already getting a payout for incentive. And so we were a participant, so we, we received a twenty-two-hundred-dollar check, and it was insane, huge, but it is a top. The care that we were already paid to provide care to these patients, and at top of that, we received twenty-two-hundred dollars for performance and a series of measures, quality measures, as well as decreasing the cost of care. And so that was lots of applause for our providers, and it was our clinic providers and our ED providers, that's where the measurement lies.
I think that's awesome. Doesn't the board think that's absolutely awesome?
Absolutely. Saving, saving money for the taxpayers, right? Because less insurance costs and getting money back, so, because of quality of care. That's, yeah, that's, that's what it was supposed to be designed to do, so we're doing it, that's great.
And I'll just throw in one other little bit there, and that is, our quality score was one hundred percent. To the brow of that.
On a scale of what?
Zero to a hundred.
A hundred and twenty.
Got that answer.
Yeah, she did.
Oh, July twentieth, we hosted another sale event, Staying Active and Independent for Life. So that was a master symposium event here on July twentieth, so there were about twenty-five people in attendance, and that is folks from many senior centers, senior gathering sites all around the Peugees Town area, but many of them right from our east side neighborhood. So it's a great exposure. We, we were simply the host site, the, the teaching was done by the sale masters. But it was a great opportunity for us, again, to showcase what it is we have on offer here. August twenty-ninth, we are, we're hosting a celebration event for all of our staff who have advanced their education in the last year. We just paused and started thinking about the number of our staff who have gotten a degree, gotten a certificate, you know, going back to school in some way, and really wanted an opportunity to draw attention to them, because many of them have done it very much under the radar. So we're, we're going to host a celebration for them at Cupcake Social, but an opportunity for them to come in and be honored, but it's also an opportunity to encourage others to do the same thing. So this event is a come and go, kind of an open house concept, and we will also have some colleges, education institutions here as well. And so anybody who's interested in learning more about what's out there, how they can do it, and all of these institutions are aimed at working students. So they'll, they'll be here as well in a different section if somebody wants to. And then just to close out, the work study that's coming up in two weeks, a couple of weeks later in the month, that's gonna be the quarterly quality presentation there, and then we'll continue a discussion about the post-transaction budget and the actual dollars that we think should go into the trust account. So just continuing that conversation that we already had earlier.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Wickup?
Just a comment, thank you for, for doing the outreach, you know, with our community because it's really important.
Ms. Pollard, your last question.
With regards to the Cigna, is that, how many institutions does that involve, besides Overlake and Evergreen, presumably, to say Eastside Health Network?
Well, the Eastside Health Network is the collection of thirteen-hundred physicians on the east side, and so if any of those participants met their quality pressures.
Okay, so it's not the facilities, it's the network providers?
Correct, correct. And, and the way that it's seen, one is a tax ID number. So there may be one physician in an office under a tax ID number, and it may be, we also are one with multiple physicians under our tax ID numbers. But that's how it's distributed, is by those, by those units.
We got a hundred percent, right?
We got a hundred percent.
And how did that compare generally with the other participants? How, how did it rank?
None of them were better. You are, I'm sorry, I act, I don't, I don't know what the distribution was. I know, I know how these work.
Any other questions for Dr. Wickup?
Moving along, our general counsel, the co-host, is gonna share something with us from Robert.
Of course, and good evening.
Good evening.
We've been covering lots of topics, and it's getting harder and harder for me to find topics, particularly those that might be of some interest. But I realized that, you know, they were talking about the different types of motions, being out of order and all those types of things. We never talked about how to make a motion, how to frame a motion. And so this evening, I'm going to share with you chapter five, section ten of Robert's Rules, it's called the framing of main motions, wording of a main motion. Now, you understand what motion is? If you look up the definition of motion, it's the action or process of moving or being moved. So when you have a motion, you're asking to move something along, that's the reason. So this is a statement of an action taken by the assembly. It should therefore be worded in three ways. One, concise, do not be verbose. Two, unambiguous, do not create ambiguity. And three, complete form appropriate to such a purpose. I have no idea what that means. It cannot employ language that is not allowed in debate. A member making the motion embodying something that has just been said by the chair or another member in informal consultation during a meeting should avoid statements such as, "So I move," or "I so move." That happens in almost every organization I go. Chair will say, "Does anybody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes?" Yeah, and then somebody will say, "I so move." That's an improper motion. You'd have a motion that says, "I so move." What would the motion be? How would you vote on the motion, "I so move"? Or people will just say, "So move." And yet, informally, most organizations accept that as the motion, they adopt it, they move on. You should not do that. I've noticed this board does not typically do that. You, you are very good about making specific motions. So you should avoid those statements, and you should recite the complete motion that you want to offer. A motion to reaffirm is out of order. Physician previously taken by adopting a motion resolutions are not in order. Don't say, "I move to reaffirm the prior motion." That would be out of order. It's already been moved, it's already been approved. And it does then conflict with the rules for motions to amend something that was previously adopted. You could move to amend it, or you could move to table or to do other things. A motion whose only effect is to propose that an assembly refrain from doing something should not be offered. It should be out of order as well. The same result can be accomplished by offering no motion at all. If it is incorrect, for example, to move that no response be made, for instance, you did a letter. "I move that no response be made in a letter." That would be an improper motion. You're not gonna make a response unless you have a motion that says what?
Make a response.
Make a response, exactly. So most of the stuff that Robert's Rules of Order thought about, remember, back in the eighteen-fifties or so, was common sense, but a lot of folks didn't have a whole lot of that. Benjamin Franklin had in fact written, "How common is sense, not variance." So people were trying to figure this out. And finally, this last paragraph does talk about it, it's preferable to avoid a motion containing a negative statement. So instead of saying things like, "I make a motion to be not in favor of proposed public bond issue," you should make your motion to say, "I move to do opposing." And in fact, you may be aware, the Public Disclosure Commission many years ago says, "All the bodies now can pass resolutions to support different bodies, others." So if you had a resolution that was occurring in the family, you wanted to support that, you'd move to support that. You would not move, "I vote," you'd not. Questions, answers? Now, you know how to make a motion?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes? In fact, can I hear a motion for both one and two under consent agenda?
I make, I make a motion to approve the minutes and the consent agenda, including the physician prudentially.
I. Okay, any discussion? Going on, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? There's no opposition, so that passes. Okay, committee reports. Finance committee is first.
All right, thank you.
You have the floor.
All right, well, we, it's kind of an odd month, because we were supposed to lose money, and we ended up making money.
Yeah.
And there are reasons. So, I just wanted to have that introduction to get your attention, so. So anyway, well, we've been, if you recall, and I wanna make sure that you all remember that when we do this contractual adjustments and things, we were always trying to find out what the payment scheme is gonna be, and we were very conservative, because that's what I want. I did not want to end up owing a half million dollars by May first, you know, after we figured it out. And so we went back, and we actually got a very concise look at it, but I think, wasn't Overlake doing that?
Overlake did a cost report.
Yeah, did a cost report.
Gave us access.
And they did an actual cost report, not something that was, not potential of reporting. And they got a very accurate one, and we were ahead by about a hundred and nineteen thousand. So, rather than being in the hole, approximately two-hundred thousand, we're only in the hole, and I'm not saying we're in the hole, I'm just saying at this time in the budget, we're at a negative forty-eight thousand. And I think there's gonna be some, I think we're gonna end up in a better situation here in the next couple of months. You'll see that we're getting thirty-eight thousand dollar credit from a billing company, which will reduce our purchase services, which we had a eighteen percent, I'm not gonna say overrun, but we, we were over budget by eighteen percent last month, and that should reduce the purchase services to be more on budget, we should be a little closer in the We had an error in numbers and accounting in the supplies, that's why we're up fifteen percent for the month. This happened last month, too, damn it. It's been an ongoing error.
It's a system problem in our board.
So Jim, Jim and Steve are trying to find out where it is. It's not like we lost money anywhere, it just, it's some kind of error in the account.
Karen and Sophie, and we are down to the bottom of this, and we need to correct the issue.
Oh. And we will have, just to let you know, we had to, we had to comply with code requirements, probably why I brought that thing about regulatory codes and whatnot for our previous meeting. And we will have to come up with between ten and fifteen thousand to comply with the code requirements at the city. And they sat on it for about two years, and then finally said, "Oh, you're out of code."
Does this have to do with the occupancy permit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To get an occupancy permit. I think they sat at it more like two and a half years. So, the good news is Ben Arroyo looked back at the agreement. Steve said, "Hey, you know, don't you guys have to do some of this stuff, work? Isn't it in the agreement?" Didn't use a lawyer, talked it up. And they said, "Yeah, that's right, we will." So they're going to draft the design and drawings, which probably will be at least that or more, that's my guess.
Is there all reserving?
Yeah, so the survey's probably about ten grand, and then, and then the drawings are probably another twenty or thirty, that's probably my guess. So that's good. Have I given you a good thing so far, everyone? Okay, we have, one thing I question, if you go to the compliance chart, with days and cash on hand, we've had as much as ninety-five days cash on hand, and you're probably wondering...
You don't have one.
You don't have one?
No.
Okay, well, then I'll report to you. We have to have sixty days cash on hand, a debt service coverage of one point two, and reserve funds of three million, six hundred and seventy thousand.
It's right here.
Okay, okay, there you go. And then, so we're really low on cash on hand, well, there is a reason. Last year, we did provide for in our contractual adjustments, so we kinda kept on, kept the money in the bank until we had to pay, so we're now paying. So there was over two million, two point two million, something like that?
Yeah, we combined the two payments.
Yeah. So that's why the cash on hand depleted us of cash, but that will be going up, and by the end of the year, we're thinking it'll be around the eighties again.
Maybe seventy.
Yeah.
That's right now, is this...
So we're still in compliance, that's not an issue, and just letting you know that that's the variance for, for right now.
When the compliance is noted once, after you're out of the financial savings, the compliance is mentioned every year.
Oh, okay, so then we'll get much better, we don't have to worry, so. And then, apparently, we're, we're supposed to receive ninety-six thousand dollar dividend from workman's comp claims through the Washington Hospital Services Trust. You recall that we're part of this trust through the collaborative, about eighteen hospitals that we join with, and so, we did that because we're not big enough to be a self-insured hospital, and I could get into all of that, but anyway, I'm not, because I don't think you follow. It's not important, I'll say that. I think at this point, I'm just going to, I don't know if I have any other notes here, but those are the main things I wanted to talk. We're doing pretty well. I mean, we had a little bit below our census budget, but all in all, we did pretty well for the bottom line, which means that we're, we're looking at costs, we're looking at our outpatient procedures, I think, we're pretty, we're up pretty good this year. We're up well over what we predicted on three or four different places. Our census is a little bit above budget, and I would say it's gonna be a little bit more now after July. This is the June budget. Emergency, we're going to be a little bit above budget, which is good. Outpatient rehab is well above budget, clinics a little bit above, imaging above budget, Endo will probably become towards budget, or we'll get there, or be above by the end of the year, my guess. Those procedures usually take place in the fall, so. With that, oh, the accounts receivable.
Yeah.
That's the one thing that is higher. And this is what's been happening in the last probably, I don't know, in the last six months, I think it's been up and down mostly, but it's been up around sixty since last December. And we've come into quite a bit of Medicare Advantage billings, and they don't pay quickly, they pay very slowly. And so we are considering potentially billing twice a month, then looking at all the extra costs, the personnel to do this. I don't know if it's really something that we'll end up doing, because it may be cost preventative for us to do that. So we will, so that, I hope will go down a little bit. We've looked, we've been looking at, all of the, the clinics are billing good, the outpatient services are, are high, but they, they've always been high, the turnaround, and so we're looking at, I just, I don't know what we're gonna be able to do to reduce it by much. Maybe we can get it down to fifty-five again by the end of the year, I don't know. So with that Medicaid, because we're taking on more and more Medicaid, Medicare Advantage plans, that will necessarily make us, make our accounts receivable go up a few every month, so. Anyway, any questions at all?
Where do you get this number, David? How do, where do you get the comparison? Is this a monthly number here that business units?
Okay, I'll look at your...
Accounts receivable days?
Yeah, this, this is a month...
Monthly?
Yeah, for, for each, the hospital outpatient sixty-eight, which is usually high.
So what is, what like, yeah, what is, what was it like last month for this? So is this a monthly rate?
Yeah, this is, this is our, this is this month's AR days.
Okay, yeah.
Okay? Our combined is on this chart here at fifty-nine point four.
Yeah, is that right there?
Yeah, fifty-nine percent, or fifty-nine.
Right.
It should be days.
Fifty-nine percent.
It should be days.
Okay, so...
And the clinics are, are below fifty, inpatient swing bed is below fifty, clinic is at, you know, thirty-six days, so just over a month, and then outpatient is higher. And you can see the Medicare days, we have a high Medicare and high Medicaid, Medicare Advantage. Do you see that? That's one of the highest we've ever found in Medicare.
Wow, it is, very high.
It can be as low, but it can be as low.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's...
What's the plan? I, I noticed that here, yeah, working on a plan to decrease AR days.
Yeah, well...
Especially Medicare.
That's what I was trying to say, is we're gonna see if, if it really is plausible to bill out twice a month, or...
Yeah, amazing.
Because it does take personnel and time and expense, so.
We're looking at our procedures, and what can we do to, you know, you're not gonna drop down the perp, but keep that number down, and our bill manager...
But we, we do have an outside collect, a collection agency, don't we? That we utilize?
We have HRG, but as well as the hospital, we also say...
HRG.
HRG. We do the building to the clinics in-house, and we have a record cycle graph with our manager, which runs after talking, and managing the whole family.
And they communicate?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Because there were some issues in the past that the, the patient family was not...
And there we go past, there were issues.
Yeah.
And our bill manager has done a very good job in improving relationships, communication, and managing the whole family.
But there was one recently that was resolved, but because this person did not know about it.
There are some individual items that happened, but I mean, yeah, we get to...
Yeah, okay.
We were well over a hundred days accounts receivable at one time, about a few years back.
Oh, a few years back.
And at that time, there was a problem with HRG, we were...
Well, we just implemented, we, our system, and we are typical...
And so we ended up, if I recall, we, we, they made some concessions, I do remember that, financial concessions.
I prefer to say they're working better with us.
Yeah. And we're supposed to get like some money back from them, aren't we?
Yeah, we're getting credit a lot, so we call...
Yeah, that's, that's what it is, right? So, and we have to remind them though.
I'm glad.
So, anyway. So, anyway.
Are there any other questions for Commissioner Siker's?
Oh, if not, I have, I have the warrants.
Just wanted to, yeah, in my day.
I just got a claimant in my pile.
Here, here, bring this one.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to approve the warrants as, um, we do have a lot this, this month. Counts payable warrants of two million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, fifty-one cents. Payroll, clinic payroll, clinic payroll taxes, auto deposits and matching clinic and hospital matching plans of another one point four, some million, or I think an all-time high of four million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents. I believe this, this is not a free payroll month, is it?
Well, there's five, is that five weeks?
No. Kind of a word. I can't remember.
It was false, it didn't have a high.
You have yours there?
Yeah.
He's looking for something to verify.
To confirm at the compare.
Well, this is the one I received, so, yeah.
Same. One million.
So, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Dr. Wickup?
Yeah, I'm moving forward.
Okay, I'll just double check, I don't, I don't, I think that's what it is, yeah.
The total number's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, all right, I make that motion at this time.
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Turning now, I'll put it to a vote. All of us in favor of...
What was called, oh, please?
Okay. Um, all those in favor of, of accepting the, the warrants as they are listed here. Um, roll call, Commissioner Pollard, I'll start with you. You've got to say, yea or nay?
I'm, I'm asking if it'd be a roll call, or are you calling me first?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I am.
Uh, no.
No, okay, Jen?
Yes.
Commissioner Siker's?
Yes.
Commissioner, yes?
Yes.
Erin, Commissioner Erin, and I vote yes.
And I assume it passes?
Yeah, all, yes, it does, it passes. Thank you. All right.
Any with you? Okay. I didn't realize, and just for the record, it was a, it, it, it was just a two, two payroll month, so...
Okay. All right, so we're moving on to medical committee now. Commissioner Erin?
Okay, in the community, most of it, Dr. Wickup had covered, but I'll go ahead and repeat them. Uh, our hospital participated in a few health events here, the Z-Tex seven-nine, which we discussed on our last board, and the Iscoa sports combine. And the prediction of those attendees, there were five thousand participants. There was a ten and a main stage, and Snoqualmie Valley Hospital, uh, did a presentation on, um, what was that? The, uh, say that stop the bleeding, yes. Okay, so, and then, of course, the Snovalley Golf Tournament was sponsored, we, uh, we covered, uh, Dr. Wickup covered that. System-wide, our IT infrastructure upgrade went well, continuing to resolve few remaining residual functionality issues. Uh, the remote temperature monitoring for the refrigerators, the warmers, or the deployment is in process now. In the past, it was done manually, so now it's in the, it's going to be a remote temperature monitoring, uh, style, so. Now, we need, on the emergency department, uh, we probably want to say a few bragging rights here. Our business days since moving into our hospital was twenty-three. That's pretty large for, you know, so that's, uh, that's really good news. Infection preview. Currently, we are doing a trialing and disposable isolation gowns, that the goal is to better cover, better coverage, easier to correctly, uh, don it off and done it on and done it off. Consideration for disposal versus laundry costs, user reviews, um, that's still something that, uh, you know, had to be taken, um, and decide whether, um, a disposable one would be a much better. Uh, but the problem is, on the laundry, the material, sometimes the fabric can be very, uh, sensitive to some people's skins, but right, Dr. Wickup?
Mostly the fets.
Mostly the feta, that's right, the design, but it's a, the, the design issue. Uh, the trailing disposable sheets, that the goal is to move the fluid from impervious, impervious sheets so that it doesn't, uh, flow underneath, there's a three layers. Uh, so, it's really interesting, because it's hard to explain how it looks like, because we don't have the material, the, the, the sample here. Considerations for disposal versus laundry costs, again, and staff and patient reviews, skin protection, that's what I was thinking. So, um, maybe Dr. Wickup can explain a little bit more, more descriptive about the disposables sheets, it's really something.
Yeah, the, so the issue is, um, a laundered sheet isn't impervious, so if it gets wet, then it penetrates on down in the mattress, also becomes wet, and so now your mattress, now, now it adds the challenge of cleaning the mattress, because another patient will eventually lay in that mattress, um, even though you have the protective barriers. Um, and so these new sheets that are coming out will not allow fluid to penetrate, fluid through, they actually capture, they catch the fluid, um, and so, kind of the same concept as a diaper.
Mm-hmm.
It'll, it'll absorb it there, but it's, but it doesn't allow the patient to stay wet, it, it packs it. And then, uh, the value add is that it is, uh, three layers of sheets, and so, just like a tear-off notepad, the top one is in use, and then when that become, when that becomes saturated, you simply tear it off, just roll it under the patient, tear it off, and the next sheet is just laying right there, and so you don't have to bring the patient completely out of bed, um, the next one's ready. And then you, you, you go through three layers, and now you do have to ask the patient to come out of bed so that she can change. Um, it's a, it's very, it's a marvelous, very...
Yeah, it's marvelous, uh, it's almost like...
And it's very soft, so, but we're try, we're trialing it, because you want to make sure that it doesn't bunch under patients, that it continues to have the same functionality as a traditional sheet.
Oh, okay, yes. And then you pull out the, the first layer, that's when you remove it, yeah, that's what you had, exactly.
And these types of sheets are used by overlay?
Um, they're not, it's just coming onto the market. So they are, these are brand-new introductions, so we're just looking at some...
I would just think that we did overlay, so we evolve in future, coordinate with them, and make sure they're on board with using these types of sheets.
Yeah, it's, until they actually are in charge of operations here, I think it's fine for us to continue to make the right decisions for our patients and our budget. But as you bring up, always looking at opportunities to align something, a decision that can't be undone or changed pretty quickly. But we're, we're still more than a year before they are going to go making a decision about operations.
Okay, any other? Uh, on the, on the lab, um, the reference lab launched, was, was launched successfully. Our next site comes online later this month, significant growth anticipated early October once results interface live. We're exploring tele microbiology. The goal is for faster turnaround time for culture results and decreased expense. Uh, our DOH survey will be eight twenty-one, but this is only for the lab. The rest will, some, we do have an annual, but this particular DOH survey will just be for that, specifically just for the lab. Sleep medicine center, physician consult started smoothly, consults. Sleep testing launch delayed due to staffing issues now resolved. Again, the, uh, Rural Health Collaborative Grant, uh, has been, was been awarded to, to the collaborative by the HRS A grant, which will fund a psychiatrist, nurse practitioner for us over two years to provide not only local in-person care, but also deliver care in other WRHC facilities via telemedicine, to demonstrate diabetes and hypertension treatment compliance, and make sure it's improved and screen and treat for depression, anxiety by, via behavioral health therapies. So this fund, this fund that is, um, awarded will pay for the nurse practitioner, so we don't have to pay for it, but we are the host, uh, hospital that will, um, take the rest of the other collaborative to, if there's any need in terms of, you know, uh, this, this culture that we need to, to improve our diabetes and hypertension treatment others. Is that right? Did I miss anything else? And, uh, I guess that's it.
Is there any questions for Commissioner Erin? Commissioner Pollard?
What is meant by, uh, in-person care?
In-person, local in-person care.
Now, are we talking about like home health care, where we go out?
Face-to-face, as opposed to through telemedicine?
Yeah, that's in the hospital.
In the clinic.
In the center. Okay.
Any other questions? And I guess we will move on to facilities committee, in that area. Facilities committee met July seventeenth, was rescheduled from June twenty-fourth. We, um, have a punch list, I don't know if Steve wants to say anything about that, Steve and Scott have been handling that. This has been obtained on the punch list for a list of items that need to be done by the outside contractors. These are as-built and to be in our possession and reviewed prior to scheduling any contract. This has a lot to do with, with, um, if I'm correct, with not getting our occupancy permit, uh, permit or our final inspection.
Yeah, it was, um, we knew, uh, somebody mentioned the city of...
They sat on it, they did.
Fifty back a few months ago, and we're working on, uh, the required documentation to them, and David mentioned that we contacted, uh, funding that, Doctor, because people realized that was...
Yeah, it wasn't our fault, so we don't have to be sorry. Um, up next is King County search and rescue. Uh, they are still in the process of finalizing with King County, the permits needed for some changes on the site, as well as the issue of water rights. The district is not involved in any of this or any of the responsibilities, so as long as they are on that piece of property, they're taking care of that. I'm making the hospital a community gathering place, I think you'll see it in the back of the report, um, that some things going on, and I guess it's not on yet, but we don't...
No, we're gonna have this done, that's okay.
We do have, though, um, it has, uh, uh, no handouts given, there are only two events, Snoqualmie Rotary on the third Thursday and Carepoint Clinic Monthly Leadership Team on the second Tuesday. And, um, we also, just want to make a look at this before I move on, okay. New business, um, transition of executive staff support for facilities, Karen Denton is now going to be COO at CNO, and she will now be the primary liaison for, um, facilities committee at the executive level. They had a regional disaster readiness exercise, the district participated in a Western Washington White disaster readiness exercise, which involved the scenario of a bomb threat resulting in the need cases, evacuate and absorb, evacuate and absorbing both patients being evacuated. Our part in it, um, our part was to take as many patients as possible being evacuated from another hospital who was designated in the exercise to be a site of credible of the pre, the bomb threat. Um, we learned, um, we learned we would have been able to accept approximately twenty patients. Uh, panorama housing, external triage, uh, an external triage event occurred a few weeks ago, and a gas line was damaged while digging on the adjacent, uh, adjacent property during construction. Um, there, you could smell the gas inside a little bit, um, but it wasn't nothing as serious. Several hours of repairs were completed, and the dietary department was, was affected in that they were unable to prepare any hot food that day, so people had cold food. Panorama housing project update, the foundations have been poured, and most of the world work has been completed. They are now starting framing, and the contractor will continue to use the hospital service road for access to the construction site. Contractor is easy to work with and very accommodating and accountable for maintenance on the service road. Echo Glen did an external triage event, does everybody know about Echo Glen? Okay, that's right down the road here, from...
That's a youth group, yeah.
And it's for youth, uh, going for youth. Night on the Dark Trail, that will not be happening, I don't believe, in, in October. The director of the event has resigned, and, um, operations have been suspended, and there will be no event this year, and I don't know what's going to happen in the future. Now Dark Trail appears to be interested in, in holding an annual event on the East Campus property in the future years. Phase three of traffic study. Three phases of the traffic study done by the city of Snoqualmie has now been completed, with phase three having just been received. Phase one was completed December two thousand and fifteen, and phase two is completed August two thousand and seventeen. Copies of the summaries of all three phases are provided, were provided to the committee. The purpose of the three-phase study was to identify if and when traffic levels at intersection Southeast Ninety-Ninth Street and Snoqualmie Parkway are severe enough to warrant mandatory installation of traffic signal. The study has concluded that traffic levels do not exceed the criteria to require the district to install a signal or other traffic control options. Who, Steve? Do you know about this traffic study? Do you know, did the city do it? Did they hire somebody to do it?
The city, so you hired a contractor. We have it.
And?
In appreciation for complications from other studies. And instead of their, as I remember, the conclusion was, there wasn't enough activity in, uh, activity in that there could be a change in...
Is this, is this our study?
I think, but, yeah, I think, uh, I did mention that, that one of the council member had mentioned they were considering maybe a mini roundabout.
Can I tell you, I, we go by this, this last week, and there was an accident right here at our intersection. So the report didn't say that it wasn't a problem, it, it did not say that at all, it was very clear, and they said it is a problematic intersection.
Right.
The issue is, it did not rise to the criteria necessary to mandate that we install, that we, we incurred the expense of installing a traffic light. Um, so, that's, that's all the traffic study was for. So there is conversation about possibly putting a roundabout in at a point in time, especially as part of the open night, uh, interchange. If that occurs, it won't happen at the end of Ninety-Ninth, it will happen further up the hill. So it'll happen on, on a straight, straight out from where the emergency room entrance is, straight out through there, in the middle of the property.
Um, light on the monument sign, and additional modifications is made, and remove the bright light on the monument sign seen on the southbound corner of Ninety-Ninth and Snoqualmie Parkway. And then we're done. Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, eight AM will be our next meeting.
Can you, can you reference the high out, out full of cash ones? We paid our Medicare costs before paying, and that's why the cash dispositions are higher.
Okay, that would make sense, then.
Yeah. I thought that, but I wanted to...
Yeah, exactly.
That's why.
Okay. So that, yeah, that totally makes sense, okay.
Okay, so we've gone through facilities committee. Do we have any old business?
About the questions, huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
About facilities?
I found a sentence here, uh, item, uh, see, we hit the bottom of the page in the new business. It says, we learned that we would have been able to accept approximately twenty patients.
Oh, we ran, we ran a drill.
The page in the back.
And we would have been able to accept twenty patients because of our capacity, if there were a capacity somewhere.
Yes.
And, and that's what we passed along to those who might sell, transfer people.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question, making it clear. Okay, no old business, new business? Um, new business, I'm gonna start the new business. Um, I have suggested to Dr. Wickup, and we need input from the board, that we have a half-day, possibly day retreat to, um, just to help us have more time to really discuss the affiliation and the process and what's going to happen. So we all are comfortable with what we're doing and the decisions that we need to make. So I'm placing that before you. Um, we have some dates... We have some dates and I think we're just talking half-day, right? Yeah, Friday times each and half-day. So I will fold these down. And you'll note that at the bottom it says, no, there's what, she's got the work study date already in here.
So that's, that's an option.
So there'll be two half-days, one in September and one in October?
No.
Or just?
We're just going to do one.
Oh, okay, just one.
But we need to pick what we want. And also, like she said, we could extend if we want to make a larger work study, if we want, when we're going over the affiliations. We want to have a longer work study, then we can do that. That's why the days are different days, mostly Wednesdays, but one Tuesday.
Should we align this with a deliverable, like when we have the agreement review or something like that, rather than just have, I'm sure that she's a date?
I don't know, I don't know how the process is going. I guess for me, and I was the one that brought it up, I just wasn't sure that we all were real comfortable with what it meant and what the implications for us were. And that it would give us an opportunity to talk to one another and see what is really important to the board and what do we want to, what are our major concerns? And what are we really wanting that we think will be perfect for our community? So I guess I just wanted it to be a time where we had some dialogue, controlled dialogue, but some dialogue about what we think and how we're feeling about it and what we would like to see and how that can happen and how the good staff could help us.
Prior to deliverables, correct? I think that's, yeah, I think that would be a much better use of our time to plan and work on that, so.
Should we kind of hand this back in, so we know what to do?
Circle them and then you hand them back and we'll get a, not circled all of them.
You circled all of them?
No. We'll find one that.
This is one for me. Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
Question on that.
Commissioner Pollard?
I wonder if it would be something to consider to invite the members of the board to overlay, not necessarily with these events, but at an event similar to this, a formal event.
It depends on how tense, I'm doing what we're going to do along, actually they're doing stuff along, helps us know what we want and who we are. And maybe at a later time, it would be more appropriate for that, but right now we don't, that's quite the problem. We really don't know what is we're really looking for, what we really want, and if we're all collectively together on it. And I just think saying what we think and how we feel and what's important to us helps us to know the direction we want to go in.
We'll hand them, one out of these five dates, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's, I'll give you my one and two.
Okay, give us dates, and we'll bring back what was.
Which one's your one and two?
This one's your first. Yeah, if he doesn't care, it could be just.
Oh, I already gave you one.
No, that's yours.
Oh, one and two?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take.
October's better, yeah, correct, that's correct. I like the October one.
Okay.
Thank you for thinking of that.
Five people are in agreement. Commissioner Pollard, are you still thinking?
Yeah, I, I'd have to consider, other things, I don't have my calendar, but I'm quite sure.
Tuesday, Wednesday, are you like Tuesday, October twenty-second?
Yeah, not Wednesday. I'm taking.
Is that kind of late though to be doing this?
No.
Okay.
It's one of the options.
Yeah, it is an option. So we'll see, we'll see how, what everybody.
One to five.
Um, Tuesdays, one.
One to five and two thirty.
One to five, yeah. So these are just half-days, couple hours posted.
This, and this Tuesday is four hours.
That's four hours. This is three.
Yep.
That one's four, four.
Then three.
Yeah, three. So there's some options. Yeah, okay, thank you. So we did that. New organizational chart. Yeah. Dr. Whitkop is going to give us a new organizational chart. Also new business. All right, so reason for doing this is to show the current org chart because as we
make the changes in our, in our executive team, that realigned the org chart. So that's what I wanted to introduce to you here. And so I apologize that it's small, but we have a lot of departments. So this is as big as we can make it on the biggest, but you have it in your packets if you ever want to study it. So the, this is finally to show, obviously, as board of commissioners, you all are always at the top, at the top of the org chart. And then there's the role of superintendent, CEO, and then Val supporting us all. And then the departments are divided then into three groups. So what's so important is in your, in your, in your organization, that every member of the organization flows off to an executive member. So that's what this accomplishes, is that it does not matter what department that you work in, if there is a path for you towards an executive member, that you can escalate any concerns, but also be represented in the C-suite. So the first column to the left is Karen's grouping. And so as chief operating officer, also as chief nursing officer, she has the group there. You'll see some materials falls under her. Those are operations, daily operations of the facility, the facilities. Also answers to her, the dietary, nutrition kitchen area, the rehab, social services, swing bed intake and utilization review, the pharmacy and imaging department, and the director of nursing. Both pharmacy and director of nursing actually duly answered to, they fall under both Karen and I, because both of those departments have very significant clinical as well as operational components. So we leave those two together. And then under the director of nursing, tucked over to the left-hand side in orange, are the departments that go first to the director of nursing before they come into the executive oversight. So the emergency department, and then surge, endoscopy, wound and infusion, and then education. So those are all under Rachel, because they're all under the right director of nursing. That's right. And then the column that falls under me, under my chief medical officer role, then is informatics and IT, because that's such a, highly a big component of all the documentation clinically. The dieticians, the clinics, infection prevention, the laboratory, medical staff services, and then all of our employee providers, all there. And then Steve, remember Steve's list is shorter because Steve is part-time. So that's, that's how we got him to part-time, because we couldn't take all of his finance responsibilities away. So everything finance we kept with him, so it had his expertise, and so we were able to offload him, to give him the opportunity to work part-time by relocating the, what the group that did answer to him before. So he still has finance, finance department, revenue cycle, and then HR. And the HR, while it's not all finance, it speaks to the wealth of experience that Steve has, working with HRs, HR department.
Well, there's a lot of compliance work.
Compliance, so the compliance isn't part of the org chart and he continues to be the compliance officer, it's just it's part of his role. Yeah, it's part of his role, but it doesn't have a department underneath it. That's what this is about. This is just a great opportunity to talk about the different roles because through different conversations and strings, I hear uncertainty about the different executive roles. So I'm just going to grab this opportunity to give you these descriptions. And so where these came from, so the CEO role, these, these are lifted out of the bylaws. So this isn't creating anything new, so this is how the bylaws describe what the CEO's role is. So the conduit between the board and the entire organization, responsibility for presenting and operating within the budget, responsible for the employees, for the facility and for regulatory compliance, supervise the business affairs of the district, and executing the contracts and the agreements within the delegated discretionary authority, and then leading the executive team. Other key roles here, again, just looking at our chart is defined. So the CFO, the CMO, and the chief operating officer. And right here, we don't need to, I don't intend to consume our time reading each of those, but these come out of each of our job descriptions. So we, we do each one of us have a unique job description as well. And so I underlined what I thought were the most important points recognized. So is the CFO, all things, the physical services and all the functions about cash, dealing with all of the auditors as well as serving as treasurer, blending then alongside the CMO role, which is around medical and clinical leadership and the expertise there, quality patient care across the disciplines. And I'm just going to jump right next door to the COO, because COO has to do with integration of operations across the department. So we have a lot of parallel and integrated work that we do together. And then COO also around all the daily hospital operations. So as we talked about too, that every, every staff member needs a conduit up to the executive suite. And so that's the reason why Karen also wears that chief nursing officer hat, because that allows all of our nurses to be represented in the executive suite as well. So I'm happy to pause and answer any questions, but this can be for you to take on read or reference as you need to along the way.
I personally have a analogy that I use, mostly in the ER, when I worked in the ER at Harborview. And that's that everybody, no matter your education, no matter your job, everybody has the same value. They are all valuable. And if anybody in this chain-linked fence isn't doing their job, it breaks down the system for everybody. So no individual is any more important than another individual so much as the task and that they do it well for the patient. It really is about the patients. And I think this is a really good example of how everything is integrated and how important everybody is to make a hospital successful. That's my two cents. Anybody else have any questions? So we now have public comment. Oh, sorry.
Do you want it?
I have three, I have three, it's a little tiny three, but I have it. Okay.
I heard you move on.
I started to. Caught myself, yes. Okay, what is, Foundation, we have a question about the Foundation.
Yeah, I think this is an opportunity for us to discuss about reviving or, you know, resurrecting Snoqualmie Valley Hospital Foundation. There was another name that I thought would be more appropriate once, if and when the affiliation takes place and closes. So the other name would be Snoqualmie Valley Health Foundation, because as now we're going to be a district, I think if we have that name, or it's much more appealing if we work towards or focusing towards population health or community health, however we want to define our, our role outside of the hospital's settings. So either, because we have Snoqualmie Valley Hospital Foundation, which I don't believe it really went farther enough to become much more like overlay foundation, I don't know. And so the other name would be Snoqualmie Valley Health Foundation to augment all the other, you know, other districts that we, to really become much more expansive in our outreach and community engagement in terms of delivering health in our community, in our district. So I don't know, it's something that we can discuss about and see. And it will also help in terms of becoming much more responsible to our taxpayers in terms of, you know, what kind of duty we as commissioners are delivering, what kind of deliverables that we will do when we, if and when the hospital is no longer in our operation, or not, we don't do the operation, we just oversee. But we, something that I think is for, important for us to look forward to the future. And so I thought we could discuss this today and see what you think about it. This, the, the Foundation will also be as the stepping stone to help us to be able to market our, you know, projects, our goals, our missions and our objectives. The Foundation and the boards, we can select people in, within the community, maybe a representative from each of the district, maybe we can find somebody from Carnation who will sit on the Foundation, from Fall City, from Preston, from North Bend and Snoqualmie, maybe more, more diverse, more equitable distribution of, and more balanced in terms of serving that entire districts that we're serving. And I think we have six districts, right? I'm sorry.
The past.
The past is one of them too.
North Bend, Snoqualmie.
Carnation.
Carnation.
Yeah, Preston too. Yeah, Preston. So we have six. The past Snoqualmie here, North Bend, Preston, Carnation, and Fall City. So that's our district, that's our service areas. So I thought that's where we can tap on those people, leaders, that could be part of our foundation, that would make, would make an excellent leaders of our foundation. So anyway, that's why I thought I'd like to continue this discussion and maybe put it in our next board meeting, continue, put on the agenda for next month. But we can continue, we can talk about it. What, what's, what are your thoughts, fellow commissioners?
I would like to see who would like to organize and who, I mean, some kind of plan on how to get people to be part of this.
I know, well, if you allow me, I'd be happy to take the lead to find those community leaders and see if they are, because I know there are a few that are really interested now. And of course, this will be, to start with, there will be a volunteer role, because we can't afford to pay anyone. I know in the past, there was an executive director that was paid by the hospital. So that's something, well, you know, whoever becomes their leader of that foundation or the president, you know, has to demonstrate that they're able and willing to deliver the goods, you know? Be able to market, be able to bring funding to our, to our foundation. And then later down the road, we can discuss whether it is an opportunity for this person to stay on and have some compensation. But for the time being, you don't need to do that.
I, I think first is the money. We need to get some grants if we want to be a foundation. And also there are probably some people in the community that would be willing to give. I know that the network and, and encompass, there are a couple different organizations that have pretty large fundraising events. And even if there's a way we can find to walk alongside and contribute to some of those organizations, if our.
We will collaborate and partner with them as well.
Yeah.
I think it's nice to have our own independent and see what, we'd like to see our taxpayers to know, to show, to show them that we're doing something, rather than always, you know, piggybacking on someone, that we are actually out there.
Well, and that's true, because you and David and his wife and a couple people from the hospital went to the Snoqualmie Valley Network Gala, they were there and supported it. So too, I think it gives us an opportunity to go out, to see other organizations. So we all have the same goals, we all want help in this valley, whether it's mental health, whether it's physical health, whatever, mental health, all those things are important.
Would it be helpful to bring back to the next meeting about this, would you like to have some legal input on how involved the board can be in the foundation, so kind of get some insight into that? A status of the, the current foundation status, because it is still alive. A status of the current foundation status, because it is still alive.
Yes, yes. I did mention briefly with General Counsel Hauser here, and yes, I think that's something that it should have been done a long time ago, when we were doing our bylaws as well.
Is there a charter? Or are there...
It's totally and separate from the hospital, yeah.
Is anything else that you want brought back that you could...
I don't, I just wanted to hear, you know, my fellow commissioners, what their thoughts are, and what you think.
Well, I think the foundation has a basis in our bylaws, is what we call it.
Yes, there is.
We have the...
Yes.
And so I'm a little confused about a Snoqualmie Valley Health Foundation board. Now, one of the things that Evergreen does is they have a community advisory board, and they pick up everything, including health. Thirty-five members on their board. And they pick people from different parts of their area. So I see that as kind of one concept. I've always been disappointed that we don't have a Snoqualmie Valley Hospital auxiliary, but that's maybe a separate question. But at any rate, I'm a little confused about what this organization would do, because the foundation itself was intended to raise money for the hospital district. And what I hear is kind of a different role. So I do think it bears additional discussion. And I need clarification. That's kind of why I would prefer if we discussed, to put it on the agenda for next time and gotten some materials, including perhaps a copy of our contract, our other...
Foundation.
Foundation. Commissioner, whether you're over the...
The charter.
That's why I'm taking notes of what you want to be brought in.
The charter.
Foundations and hospitals generally are there to receive requests, use money, and someone passes on a thousand dollars to the foundation, that kind of thing. And that's a very useful purpose.
Okay, we can, you know, we can bring it up and add it to the agenda for next month.
If you see your hands before you...
Yeah, that would be lovely.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. That's a public comment, yeah.
Just to acknowledge that Scott and the audience here was so instrumental in getting the foundation up and going. So that's how we have a relationship with them. Thank you.
Yes, and now we have public comment.
Public comment.
Okay. All right, no public comments. You've already done some new business. Is there any other new business or action items that we need to attend to? Hearing none, let's see. Good of the order, commissioner comments. Each commissioner shall have one comment, period limited to three minutes. And we will start with Commissioner Pollard.
I think all of our hearts hurt from the epidemic of terrorism we've seen from Gilroy, El Paso, Ohio, and today another four people with COVID-19. It's really an epidemic. And it just occurred to me that we need to be sure we're doing what we can to ensure security of the hospital. I know we can do the periodic disaster exercises, and that's good, good. But what I'm concerned about is when I go into my bank, it says, no hats, no hoodies, no backpacks. We don't have anything at entrance like that. I'm concerned about security at entrance. I know we can handle this disaster, events and so on, but I would like to see more security at entrance. And I today, or yesterday, a couple days ago, I spoke with the head of security at Overlay, I told Los Angeles, he's going to be going out to Los Angeles all next week for a training session for officers like years in hospitals and other organizations that's going to be put on by the city of Los Angeles and the FBI to deal with these kinds of issues. And I don't know what the answer is, I'm not a security professional, but I would like to see more security at entrance, so that a person can't just walk in and cause some kind of chaos, whatever it is.
So I'd like to... Just update on some of the things. So we are signed as no guns. So as you come in, we are signed for no guns, outside in the periphery as no guns. The people in the emergency room, they're reminded, one of the questions that they're asked on entry is, do you have any weapons on you? We have a process in place with the Snoqualmie Police Department, that should anyone have a weapon on them, that they're willing, they'll be willing to voluntarily give out or not, the police department will come and take that, just for safekeeping. So the person is willing to voluntarily, we say, yeah, and we say, you can't have it here. Police department will come and hold that until they're done here. Obviously, they won't give it up voluntarily, the police has their own processes for that. But we also have the security guard at the front desk all the time, and as well as complete camera perimeters. So we are constantly watching. So the security guard has a camera on each of the entrances, watching it. And we do active shooter training. So we have had all of our staff go through active shooter training. The Snoqualmie Police Department has put together very nice video training. We've had them come in and teach, as well as give their video. And then last night, our facilities director participated in an active shooter conference. It was led by the FBI. It was in fact local, it was Snoqualmie Casino. So he was at that, and so we're looking forward to hearing what he learned, sharing the things that we already know. The American Hospital Association also puts together active shooter training, not only just the active shooter, but also the prevention measures, so how do you, how do you just keep it from becoming an issue at all? And so we've also adopted and brought that in as a reference point to that. And so third, the final thing I'll say is, we do have the ability to shut the facility down. Should we ever...
You left, sorry.
To shut the facility down or lock it down. So should we ever find ourselves in a scenario where we feel like that there's a threat external, at the push of a button, the security guard can lock every external door, so that there's no entrance into it.
Well, I appreciate those are all very good things. But still, I feel uncomfortable, you've got a security guard sitting there some of the time. And we do have the police guard, I would suggest if you put it out there where it's totally visible and all, that sort of thing, security guards car. But I still would like to see us focus a little more on prevention of that person that might come in and cause problems. And I don't know whether, high schools, I think they screen people, don't they, at the entrance to the high school? Don't they screen people? I'd just like to know that we're not doing anything less than what other hospitals are doing. And the head of security at Overlay, we couldn't go into a lot of detail, because he doesn't know me, and I don't know him exactly, but there are things we can do and things they are doing at entrance that I think we should consider.
I can tell you that we do more than anyone else, because the only entrance into our building that is free access is through the front door and the emergency room. Both of those are constantly individual. Any other access, you can only get in if you have...
Yeah, so I'm concerned about the main entrance. Mainly, you make a good point about the emergency room, but I just would like to see more additional security presented.
The president can make a comment.
That's my, that's my three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. I think there are two issues that happened in this particular sad violence act this past weekend. One, of course, is the issue of gun violence, and I think the other issue is the mental health. I think it was more appropriate for us now that we are going to be hiring a nurse practitioner, that we can focus on that, to improve our screening and treating those people with depression and anxiety and behavioral issues and mental health issues. So that is something I think we need to also focus besides all the gun violence that is now really being addressed. There are two issues that, you know, it's unfortunate that this mental and behavioral problems been ongoing, and, you know, it seems like it's a never-ending issue that we all have to contend with. So, yeah, I'm sad about the, you know, the violence that is occurring in our nation, so...
Jen, did you want to say something? New topic? Or people are...
Yeah, three minutes.
Well, are we done with that?
Got three minutes.
You have three minutes, go first.
I just want to congratulate again Dr. Whitcup and your staff for achieving the value-based payment from Cigna. That is how the industry is trending, and it's delightful that you're in front of it and already benefiting from it.
I just quick, had a great comment from a client that showed up and was complaining about another hospital. I wanted to find out who the, what hospital it was first, before I went any further. And then, then just by chance, they mentioned Snoqualmie. And they go, what a great place that was. But she eventually passed away, and they thought this was the best care they've ever received. They had many good things to say about this hospital and the staff.
It's good to hear that, because they...
And I was able to actually get permission to say that.
You know, it's nice to hear that, because there's some people, there was somebody that called me, that just had all kinds of bad stuff to say, and I think it was about drugs. I think it was more related to a drug issue than anything else, actually. That's good to hear. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
I think you can just say...
You don't have to.
You can just say, you can just say...
You don't have to.
You can just say, you can just say...